Hello, everybody. It is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. Welcome to the City Council of the seventh, 2022. Um, I would like to start the meeting today with a real call, please. Maybe. Oh, my goodness. Mayor Seaman. Ah, it's Alzheimer's Month, obviously.
So.
Yes, Mayor Seaman is here.
Uh, Councilmember Castellano here. Councilmember Moulton is absent. Councilmember Arroyo here. Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
And Councilmember Bregel.
Here.
All right. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Okay. Uh, now we are going to do the mayor's announcements. We have, uh, several proclamations today. And we are going to start with, okay, you do have it. Uh, A1 is the Special Olympics Northern California Torch Run. And I believe Mark Wheatley is here to receive it. And Councilmember Bregel is gonna read that.
Thank you. Would you like to come forward, Teresa Two and Gregory? You don't have to. We'd like to, to honor you. So, City of Eureka Proclamation. In recognition of 2022 inaugural Humboldt County Law Enforcement Torch Run in Eureka to support Special Olympics Northern California, June 7th, 2022. Whereas Special Olympics has been changing lives and attitudes for over 54 years, and today is the largest world sports organization for people with intellectual disabilities in over 200 counties. And whereas law enforcement officers from around the world have logged over 500,000 miles running in the Law Enforcement Torch Run to support Special Olympics since 1981. And whereas 2022 marks the 25th anniversary of the Law Enforcement Torch Run in Northern California. And we will be celebrating the inaugural Torch Run in Humboldt County on June 15th. And whereas, since 1997, law enforcement in Northern California have raised over $20 million in support of athlete programs, making the annual Torch Run the largest public awareness and gra- grassroots fundraiser for Special Olympics. And whereas, the City of Eureka enthusiastically supports the efforts of Special Olympics to deliver essential health, wellness, and sports programs, to promote social inclusion, to end bullying and discrimination, and to join people with and without disabilities together to compete as teammates in unified sports. And whereas, the City of Eureka wishes to inspire greatness in our local athletes and commends the efforts of our Eureka Police Officers, demonstrating their moral strength and courage as guardians of the flame in support of Special Olympics Northern California. Now, therefore, I, Kim Bregel, Bregel, that's my name, on behalf of the Mayor Susan Seaman and the Eureka City Council, do now hereby proclaim June 15th, 2022, as Torch Run Day, and encourage our community to join with all participating law enforcement personnel throughout Humboldt County in support of Special Olympics Northern California.
You want to take, take the proclamation from Kim?
Thank you so much. Ah, everybody.
Absolutely. She wants to take a little picture with you.
Okay.
Say, America, pray again.
Woo!
So, I want to thank the council, mayor, for sponsoring this proclamation. And just to, to let the public know that, uh, this is the 25th year. The torch run is the largest fundraiser for Special Olympics nationally. So this is the 25th year of the torch run. And it is actually an international event. This is the first time we've had it in Humboldt County. So this is our inaugural event. And I really have to just start off by thanking your police chief and your police staff for all the help. They've, they've really stepped up here and are helping making this come together. So this is gonna happen on Wednesday, June 15th, 12:30. We will start at the Adorni Center, and we will make our way through the Old Town area. And we'll end on the boardwalk at, uh, Coast Guard Plaza. And we'll take a drone picture of the crowd. And so we invite all of you to be there. And it's, it's, I know it's not the greatest time of day, and Wednesday's not the best day for the event. But what happens is for the Summer Games, which this year moves from UC Davis to University Santa Clara on the 24th of June. So on June 12th, this is the kickoff from Sacramento. So just like the Olympics, the torch will be making its way around through all the counties. So Humboldt County's Day is June 15th. And you guys are going to be the host city for our inaugural event. So I really want to thank you. We invite the community to come out there and be participants. Law enforcement are the guardians of the flame. They'll be the ones that carry the torch through town. And we ask everyone in the community to come out and s- help support Special Olympics. So with that, I want to introduce a couple. First, I'll introduce my brother, who is named Greg. And he's been a Special Olympic athlete for many years. Greg had a, a brain injury from a car accident many, many years ago. And then this is Teresa Fisher, who Buster Posey does not have a greater fan in the world than Teresa Fisher. And she has got such a wicked three-point shot that I've seen her, like, have gyms come to their feet over it. So Steph Curry would be admiring her shot. So it's a sweet thing to see. So she's an awesome basketball player and softball player. And she will be one of our princesses for our event. So, so thank you very much for inviting us. And we'll look forward to seeing you hopefully on the 15th.
Thank you for everything that you're doing to put this together. And I checked my calendar. It is on my calendar right now. So we'll see you there.
Thank you. Wait, hopefully it's a sunny day. Yes.
We're not sugar. Bye-bye. See you later. And now, um, as I occasionally do, I recognized that I skipped right over the report out of closed session. So we're gonna just jump in the middle of the mayor's report and we'll let you do your... Thank you very much.
I would have reminded you eventually.
I know.
Uh, we do have something to report out of closed session today on a motion by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Arroyo. The council voted four yeses, one absent. Councilmember Moulton, uh, to authorize the city attorney to initiate litigation against the county of Humboldt and the Humboldt County Auditor Controller.
Thank you very much. We are now gonna return to our mayor's announcements. And A2 is National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. I see Lynn McKenna is here. And that proclamation will be read by Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. This is in recognition of National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, June 2022. Whereas today, there are more than 6 million Americans living with Alzheimer's disease, a figure that is expected to grow to as many as 13 million by 2050 if scientists don't develop a cure or an effective treatment. And whereas, one in three seniors dies from, with Alzheimer's or another dementia. It kills more people than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Between 2002 and 2019, death from heart disease ha- have, has decreased 7.3%, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease has increased 145%. And whereas, more than 11 million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. In 2021, these caregivers provided more than $16 billion hours of care valued at nearly $272 billion. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is a local issue. Our friends and neighbors need access to support services and resources to lessen the disease's impacts. In Humboldt County, it is estimated that about 3,384 people currently live with Alzheimer's and related dementias. There are another 7,600 caregivers who are caring for a loved one with Alzheimer's. And whereas, in 2020, COVID-19 contributed to a 17% increase in Alzheimer's and dementia deaths. And whereas, fewer than one in five Americans are familiar with mild cognitive impairment, uh, MCI, which can be an early stage of Alzheimer's. 90% of physicians say it's important to diagnose MCI due to Alzheimer's, but over half say they are not fully comfortable making that diagnosis. And whereas, during June, the Alzheimer's Association invites Humboldt County residents to participate in the Longest Day on June 21st. Held annually on the summer solstice, the Longest Day invites participants to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through a fundraising activity of their choice or by wearing purple. Now, therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim June Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. The council thanks the Alzheimer's Association for providing services to people and families coping with dementia.
And while we're waiting for Lynn to talk, I just want to say, um, that the work that you do is so important. For so long, I've championed for, uh, childcare. But we see families all the time who have to take time off work and are unable to work because they're caring for parents who have...
Yeah, parents or grandparents.
Parents and grandparents.
So, yes, um, I am the advocacy chairperson for our region, which includes Humboldt and Del Norte County. And so one of my responsibilities is to bring awareness to Alzheimer's. So I compare Alzheimer's to AIDS back when AIDS was first coming around and nobody wanted to talk about it. It was a very taboo subject. Alzheimer's is sort of the same type of thing. People don't feel comfortable talking about it in public, don't feel comfortable acknowledging that a family member has it or that they possibly could have it. So education is key. Um, if you suspect you have it, you need to make an appointment with your physician and take somebody with you. Sometimes you have to advocate intensely to get them to do the test for mild cognitive impairment. And as the proclamation said, many doctors also need to be educated. So June itself is Brain Awareness Month. Um, we all hear about a healthy heart diet and what we need to do to keep our heart healthy. If you keep your heart healthy, you're gonna keep your brain healthy because all of our organs are interconnected. So a healthy heart is also a healthy brain. And there are several, um, there's 10 warning signs. So I gave everybody a packet, and I have the 10 warning signs. If anybody else in the audience would like a copy of it. We all sometimes forget, we forget where we put our car keys, we walk into a room, forget why we did, you know, what we were in there for. That is not really Alzheimer's, that's not dementia. It's just, there's a, uh, aging process. Sometimes we've got too many things on our mind. So if you look at the pamphlet with the 10 warning signs, it tells you what it is, and then it tells you if it is or is not a true symptom of, um, potential dementia. So again, we encourage you to wear purple throughout the month of June, especially on June 21st. And we'll be having more publicity and things about the Longest Day. So I want to thank the council for acknowledging this problem. And hopefully, as we work together and support the people in our community and make aware there is help, there's a 24 toll-free, 24/7 toll-free hotline. Uh, Senior Resource Center, Redwood Area Action Agency, Area One Agency have programs that can help you. And please, if you think you have that inclination, or you're worried about it, or you know a family member that's heading in that direction, please reach out. We are here to help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next, um, item is Pride Month, Pride Month. Um, that's gonna be read by Councilmember Castellano. And do we have anybody here to ex- to receive the Pride Month proclamation online or in house? Excellent. All right. You can stand there and, uh, Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. This is the City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas, our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the nation and the American society. And whereas, in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, queer, intersex, LGBTQIA people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28th, 1969 in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. And whereas, during these riots, LGBTQIA citizens rose up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. In the last, in the four decades since, civil rights for LGBTQIA people have grown substantially, and LGBTQIA pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall Riots. And whereas, California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBTQIA citizens. And while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas, the City of Eureka recognizes and celebrates the steps forward our nation has made, but understands the challenges and struggles for full equality continue for Eureka residents and vi- and visitors, including those in its lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex allied community. Now, therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Susan Seaman and the Eureka City Council, hereby proclaim June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and allies' Pride Month.
Thank you all for having me here today. My name is Ty Parker. I use they/them pronouns, and I am the president of the Board for Queer Humboldt. Um, here at Queer Humboldt, we are honored just to be recognized and acknowledged in the month of Pride by the City of Eureka for the continuing work that we are doing. Um, and I think it's great that we did mention the Stonewall Riots because we've come so far since then, but there's still work to do. And so I'm really excited that we are moving into a direction that I can be proud of, to say that I live in the, you know, millennium I live in and whatnot. Um, and I'd also like to urge everyone, as it is a recognition of Pride Month, to donate your labor, time, or money, if you can, to our local pride or LGBT businesses and organizations here locally. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and our last proclamation today is Juneteenth, and that will be read by Councilmember...
Great. Do we have someone online who will be receiving the proclamation? Okay, okay. All right. So this proclamation is in recognition of Juneteenth, June 19th, 2022. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring this enslaved people in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, worried about the signing of the Emancipation to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and Southwestern United States. And whereas, Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas, City of Eureka offices will be closed Monday, June 20th, in observance of Juneteenth. And whereas, Black Humboldt will be hosting a weekend celebration beginning June 16th through June 20th, featuring a wide variety of Black-curated events and projects. Now, therefore, I, Natalia Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, hereby declare Sunday, June 19th, 2022, Juneteenth Day in Eureka, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city.
Um, if we don't have anybody here from Black Humboldt, can I ask Councilmember Castellano, since they're... Do you know more about the event that's gonna be held? Any, someplace people can find more information?
Sure. Oh, and I think, uh, Mo from Black Humboldt is jumping on momentarily. Um, so I'll, I'll try to stall until then.
Excellent.
But just saying, it's going to be taking place in Arcata this year on the plaza. Um, and, you know, in past years, I can't speak too much to this year, but i- if it's, you know, there's great musical acts and food and speakers and vendors throughout the day. So it's a great opportunity to come out and support Black-owned businesses in the community.
I have some more information. I pulled up the, the website, if that's helpful, um, just while we're, while we're waiting for, for Mo, in case they're able to join. Um, so blackhumboldt.com has, um, information about the 2022 Juneteenth Celebration. And I was excited to see that this year there are going to be, um, a number of movies at, um, at the, uh, North Coast Repertory Theater in Eureka. So that's the component that, that's here. And I'm excited to see some of the film screenings. And so that can be found at blackhumboldt.com backslash 2022 Juneteenth Celebration. But I think it's probably easiest to just go to blackhumboldt.com and navigate to it from there. And wonderful.
Excellent.
Mo, we just read the proclamation, um, and I wanted to ask you if you'd like to... Did Mo just join right then? No problem. I know sometimes if you're watching remotely, there's a slight delay too, so...
Mo, are you able to hear us through Zoom?
Um, Mo's having trouble hearing, but I just told Mo they're on in case they can't hear.
Well, maybe it will be helpful if I keep talking so Mo is able to hear something while trying to get the sound figured out. So I'm gonna, um, Mo, feel free to jump in whenever, whenever you're able. Um, I am just trying to make it so that, um, you're able to hear. Um, so as, I was mentioning that there's a couple films being shown in Eureka, and then a number of events in Arcata that are planned. Um, so the 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th, there'll be events. And then a handful of, um, films being shown in Eureka at North Coast Repertory Theater.
Will there be anything virtual this year?
I don't see anything virtual, but, um, it looks like there are a number of, of in-person events.
All right. Mo, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh. Oh, that's Latonya.
Yes, thank you, Latonya.
I'm sorry, were you waiting for me to say something?
No, we're looking for Mo. We were waiting for her, our speaker, Mo, and she has rejoined us, so, let's see.
I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear you, so I raised my hand to let you know I couldn't hear you.
Gotcha.
Thank you so much for letting us know, Latonya.
Thank you. All right. So Mo is back on. Mo is here.
Thank you very much. Hey, Mo.
I am here, and I can hear you well. Hello, thank you.
So we just read your proclamation, and, um, now it's, and we talked a little bit about the events we are reading off of the website. But if you have anything you'd like to share, um, anything you're particularly excited about this time, uh, this is your chance.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just, um, one, say thanks for putting this on the agenda and taking the time to, uh, really create space, to create a, uh, tradition of Juneteenth in Humboldt County. It's, it's so impactful and meaningful for our micro Black community to have this representation and to have the support and allyship of the non-Black community. And, um, this year, we just have, uh, four days of events. Uh, a lot of them are community-wide. Uh, so this is a chance for folks to get involved with Black Humboldt that aren't a part of the Black or Brown community, and as well as take part in the culture that comes with our events and Juneteenth as a whole. As well as we will be holding at least one exclusive space every day of the festival for our Black and Brown community to have, uh, time to connect with one another. And so I urge folks to check out the schedule and see what they're interested in, and, um, to try to attend as many things as you can. Um, and, and yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you so much. Oh, sorry, I read the proclamation, so I figured I'd respond. But anyway, thank you so much. Um, and we'll make sure to, um, send you the proclamation or arrange for you to pick it up.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so I just have a very brief, brief report today. I, I just wanted to mention that this afternoon, I got to have lunch with 12 really wonderful kids from Eureka High School. Uh, Jim Ritter and Mr. Parker, I believe, brought them here. And we just, they got to go to a board of supervisors meeting, they went to visit the elections office. Several of them had just turned 18 and were able to vote. And then they got to end their day here, um, just talking about city government and what we do and what it's like to serve on council. And it was really, uh, it was a fun, engaging group. Uh, Councilmember Arroyo attended with us. And, uh, looking forward all the time to having those opportunities to work with our, you know, the young kids who are coming up and are gonna be the leaders of tomorrow. So we also did have Sierra come, who is, works with our youth council and talked about our youth council. One of the students was a youth council member last year. So, um, it was a really, it was a good time, and we always enjoy doing things like that. Thank you to City Manager Slattery for letting me pull him away from his desk with no notification at all. And he came in and, and told great stories. And that is it for my mayor's report today. So we will move on now to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Our policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Do we have anybody in-house who would like to make...
Good evening. I think this is probably only the second time I've been down here where I'm gonna start with something positive. But you guys keep doing this to me. I want to commend you all, and thank you for recognizing the woman that was promoting Alzheimer's awareness. My father died from Alzheimer's, and I believe that, uh, the more we can educate people on the whole thing, um, the better. And so thank you for reckon, publicly recognizing that. And the other thing was the, uh, Special Olympics. Uh, my nephew is autistic, and I have a good friend in Canada, ironically in Humboldt, Ca- Canada, um, who was, he was autistic. And, uh, both of them were, um, their parents were advised to write them off when they were young and put them in a, in a care home and, and just forget about them. Um, and fortunately, my nephew, my sister and her husband went to work and, um, worked with him. And now he's a fairly successful country singer. And, um, and my friend in, in, in Canada is one of the best writers I know. Um, I'm the administrator of our International Writers Site, and he's one of our best contributors. Um, so I know that, um, that there is hope for people with autism and, and whatnot. And, uh, as a matter of fact, the one, my friend in Canada is an active participant in the Special Olympics. of fact, the one, my friend in Canada is an active participant in the Special Olympics. So kudos for recognizing that too. Moving on from that, now that I've made everybody smile, I'm looking forward to June 19th, or Juneteenth, or whatever it is too, because I, every year I get disappointed, but I eagerly anticipate what I've always envisioned that day being, which is a day for every descendant of a black slave to publicly thank every descendant of someone who fought and died and worked to free them. Because our country is the only country in the history of mankind that was formed and freed the slaves in less than 100 years. And we are constantly criticized and, and denigrated as if we were the ones that invented the whole thing. And I just am waiting for us to get recognized for the fact that we ended slavery faster than any civilization in the entire history of mankind. And, and beyond that, I got another half a minute. So I went down to, to do a cleanup with the Pack Out Green team the other day. And, you know, we got a ton and a half of garbage and 200 needles out of one camp. And those needles didn't come from Walgreens. Those needles came from Hatcher. And I think you all need to really, really look at your support of that organization. It needs to end.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Charles Wilson. This is Military Appreciation Month, or something similar to that. Reminds me of an incident that happened 55 years ago on June 8th, when the USS Liberty, a surveillance ship, an unarmed surveillance ship, was loafing along off from Israel. They were listening to the Israeli, this was about the fourth day of the eight, 1976, six-day war. And Israel was planning to break their truce with Syria and attack the Golan Heights. So the Syrians, so the Israelis didn't like them listening in on what they were planning on doing. So anyway, the USS Liberty was flying the American flag. It had US Liberty painted on the back of the boat. So I think it's a 450-foot ship there. It had its number, the ship number on the bow was written in English letters or numbers, not Arabic. So it wasn't, wouldn't be confused with Egypt or anything like that. And let's see, it had, it was loafing along about, I think, about five knots. The maximum it could go was 18. Now, two Israeli torpedo boats, they, their radar guys, they're presumably trained to know what they're doing, said it was going at 30 knots. Therefore, it must be a warship. So they go out to attack it. They had a couple of jets go out there. They bombed it with thousand-pound bombs and napalm. And they, the torpedo boats fired four, five torpedoes. One of them hit 34. American soldiers were killed, 171 injured. And anyway, it, it makes you wonder how much you want to trust government. Thank you. They called them out and they were gonna, McNamara, the Secretary of Defense, called back all the help so that they wouldn't be helped. Thank you.
Okay, this is Genevieve Wilson. We all talk about slave here and there. A slave means you have to do something that you doesn't want to and you need to justify it. So wearing a mask, taking a vaccine that you don't need to, you have natural immunity, that's a slave. So what kind of slave is that? Black slave, white slave, all kinds of slave. We are slaved by the globalists. Okay. By the way, have you heard about hybrid immunity? Hybrid immunity mean you take a vaccine, you might have immunity, and then you have a breakthrough cases and you still get sick. That you have immunity. Oh, that's fine and dandy, hybrid immunity. So anyway, by the way, just, you need to remember you have natural immunity. God give you a natural immunity and God give you a nose to breathe. If the mask doesn't work, it doesn't work. You don't need to. My point is, no, don't force people. And now we talk about Humboldt County. They talk about climate changes. So they want to build a city with 250, maybe 250,000 people, big city. And now you worry about the climate changes, the pollution. You build a big city and then you kind of worry about the, the pollution. That to me is contradict to each other. Every place have a different place, different specialty. Humboldt County is whatever the population, we should respect that. That's all I'm gonna say. And some, and we all always need to respect our constitution. Okay? Go by your constitution and common law. So I sing my old song. Love and freedom, love and freedom. Everyone desire hate and tyranny, hate and tyranny. Everyone despite heavenly love, heavenly love will be back in time if all the patriots united and compliant. So we all to think about that and be loved. Love will prevail. In this situation, I hope no, no lockdown coming back. Monkeypox and syphilis, fear is a real virus. Okay? Take care of yourself and we all respect each other and that's the only thing. Love will prevail. That's all I want to say. Keep on doing that. That will be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in house that wants to speak during public comment? If not, we'll move over to Zoom. And I know Latonya is.
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I do have work minutes to get to you guys. And I haven't forgotten. I, I, I hope that when I submit in chat, which is now disabled for me, through the three minutes speaking, I hope that's something to start with. In terms of what the voting, I, I did have a chance to vote. I am impressed with the way the candidates are able to advertise about themselves. And as far as helping out with different events or groups, I would be like to be a part of that. And I will contact or submit my request in writing. And in terms of the behavior of the people in the city, I gotta tell you, you're pretty clever. I'm no psychology major, but you know, I'll do my very best to try to keep an open mind and, and do not react quickly. But I do, I'm not a me, me, me person. No. I just like my family a lot. And I thank you very much for allowing me to be able to participate in the meeting today. And I look forward to participating more. And I do need to hear from my son, Jeremy Jacob, so that I can determine whether or not we're going to see our family member graduate away across the country and on the East Coast. I do need to see my son, Jeremy Jacob, because we're supposed to be driving down together. If that's a possibility, I need to know. Thanks for the message.
Thank you. So next we have Ash.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, hello, this is Ash here with the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, humboldfc.com. As you may know, as I said before, my wife lost her job with the city sometime late last year. And as far as I know, the, the policy that did that still stands. And it stands in stark contrast with many of the messages of inclusivity that some of the council members post online. So I also see posts about meetings encouraging people to gather and clean up Eureka. And that, that kind of seems akin to putting like a Band-Aid over a bullet wound when it comes to the, the needle letter we see, like a previous speaker mentioned with the, just handing out needles to people at will. That might be something the city might want to back away from. A council member told me before that they were too busy to look at a lot of pressing world news and events outside of the mainstream narrative. And with this in mind, I'd like to read some headlines I found of interest. In Peru, 5G antennas were taken down because the public had become aware of their dangers. I guess they've got enough people aware of it, they actually did something about it. The same thing happened in France. This, this instance, it was over like a cow rancher found that they were damaging the health of his cattle. So I guess that, that might be something we can look at locally for environmental concerns. The new Novak shot, COVID-19 vaccine deficiency against death is negative 9%, while against COVID, it's claimed to be 9% effective, or negative percentage for death. An inconvenient truth for a globalist, Arctic ice is at a 30-year high for all the climate change stuff going on. U.S. government lost a landmark lawsuit finding that no quality control and available vaccines has really taken place for the past 32 years. In Canada, 95% of the monkeypox cases are found to actually be shingles. And some doctors suspected the cause might be from the COVID shot. My grandma actually got shingles right after getting the Moderna, but then a month later. In immunology professionals, on why data shows that COVID infections are occurring more among boosted Americans, something to look at and know how, how the work rate has been since the city's all fully vaccinated and boosted. There's been a lot of reinfections there. CDC admits that well over two-thirds of Americans are not fully vaccinated. But what they did there is they claimed.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Percent? Sorry, what was that?
Your time is up. That was three minutes. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else online who is, if you'd raise your hand or otherwise let us know that you would like to make a comment? I don't see anyone. A Christensen?
Yep. I just wanted to ask again if you guys could work on getting the Eureka Transit bus service to run past 6:00 PM. That would be great so that people can get home from work. That's all. Have a good one.
Thank you very much. I did see a couple of folks come in. Were you here for public comment? Do we have anybody else in house that needs public, to make a public comment? Okay, come on up.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Tyler Semich and I'm a senior at Eureka High School. And my question is, due to the Cal Poly Humboldt opening and the student population growing, what is the city council on dealing with the housing and infrastructures?
So during public comment, we don't respond to questions, but you are welcome to reach out to any of us and to have a conversation about that.
Okay, okay, cool. Thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Ty. I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for all you do. And you guys are doing a great job and we appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have anybody else online? Because that'd be a great way to end it. All right. Well, then we will go ahead and close public comment and we will move on to public hearings. This is the 2022-23 budget adoption. And we have Director Malar here, who's been working very hard and diligently in answering lots of questions. Although he did pretend like he forgot there was a council meeting today. He didn't fool me though.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight is the last budget presentation, unfortunately. So what we're going to talk about for tonight, we're going to look at reserves by major funds. And then we're going to look at reserve funding strategies.
Excuse me, can we, can I do a point of order? There's too much noise in the audience and I'm having a difficulty. Hearing, yes. Hearing. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So it's going to be a relatively short presentation. We're going to end with, hopefully, adopting the budget. So a few notes as I begin. Reserves can also mean fund balance and that can also mean working capital. I might use these interchangeably. They pretty much mean the same thing. Some really strict accountants might argue with me, but for this purpose, they all should work. And then I'll be showing reserves not only as a dollar amount, but also in months. Why do I do that? Because we really want to understand how much we have in fund balance relative to how large the operation is. So tonight, I'll be showing you operational expenditures. This is mainly salaries and benefits, supplies and materials, consulting fees, and some smaller capital outlays. It really highlights our core services. So things like projects or capital projects and debt service payments and transfer, those are not included as operational expenditures. And last but not least, some of these are projections or forecasts. So I cannot guarantee that all of this data will be the same at the end of next fiscal year. So to begin, reserves by fund. So that's a lot of information right there. So I'm going to kind of pull this back in a minute. But I'm going to show you what I showed you in last year's budget and then what's in this year's budget. And I think that's important because it kind of compares how we forecast and how accurate these forecasts are. I just want to point out that in last year's 21-22 budget, in that first chart, at the time that was forecast, but then down below that 21-22 line, it's not exact, but given the fact that it's June and our fiscal year starts in July, we pretty much know the numbers by now. So to kind of break this down again, right there, that's the operating budget. So this is the water fund. That's how much is allocated just for operations, not projects or anything like that. This is showing you where we began the year. So at the beginning of fiscal year 2021, we had about $11 million in fund reserve in the water fund. And that represents about 19 months. We ended the year with about 10.1 million, which represents 17.6 months. So that's kind of how these charts work. Also, that first line, the confidence is very high because I just, you know, remember that, you know, at this time, we're pretty much through the fiscal year. So that line is pretty accurate. The following line is a lower confidence because that is mainly a projection or a forecast. So going back to the water fund, I do want to point out that last year, we forecasted about 11 months. If you look on that right side, I think, yeah, about 11 months of reserve in the water fund at the end of 21-22. As of now, that's actually about 12 months. So that's a good increase. And then I also want to point out that we had 19 months back in July of 20, but today we have eight months. Eight months is still good and it still achieves our goal of six months. have eight months. Eight months is still good and it still achieves our goal of six months. It also was anticipated that our fund or working capital would go down in the water fund. We nineteen months is more than we need. And by dipping into that working capital, we were able to lower the rate increases during the last rate study. Next, we have the wastewater fund. So first of all, I'd like to point out how our forecast did. So last year, we anticipated about nine point seven months. Right now, we're looking at just over nine, pretty close. And then, you know, we went from twelve months back in July of twenty and now we're just under eight. We are getting close to that six month threshold, but it's still doing well and we do have a rate study in progress. Next, I will look at the internal service funds as a whole. So that includes equipment operations, risk management, info tech, internal operations or government and administrative services, and then facilities operation. Together, it's a pretty significant budget. We're looking at ten plus million dollars, which back at the beginning of July of twenty, we actually had two point six months of working capital. Typically, in internal service funds, you don't hold reserves. And the idea is that these funds should only recoup what they spend. But thankfully, we did have reserves in these funds because they helped us kind of manage the large cuts we saw at the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. When we thought our revenue streams in the general fund were essentially getting drastically decreased. So at the end of twenty twenty-one, because we dipped into those reserves, we actually went into the red. And then at the time back during last year's budget, that did not improve. But thankfully, as of now, we're expecting to be back in the black. And then at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, we're getting close to one month. So we're not back at that two point six months, but we are going in the right direction. And this was a kind of a a last ditch effort to avoid actually laying people off in the general fund. So finally, we have the general fund. So just to begin, last year's budget projected about two point nine months in reserves. Right now, we're looking at about two point or three point two at the end of this fiscal year. And then going forward, about three point four months. This is a large improvement. Back in July of twenty, we hit a low of about one point three months. So today, even though we're not at that sixth month marker, we've improved greatly and we're probably looking at more working capital as a percentage of the general fund budget in the last ten or twenty years. So, you know, things are, you know, doing very well. So this leads into how do we increase that number? So this exercise actually was a little more involved than I thought and a lot harder. Or it was a little bit harder to identify what the best strategy is. So tonight, I'm just going to throw out some potential to kind of get us used to this idea of, you know, building reserves to hit a target. So whenever you forecast, you always build in assumptions and those are important because if your assumptions are wrong, typically your models are worthless. So I'm going to cross my fingers and I'm going to project that the general fund will grow at about two percent per fiscal year. And I'm, you know, when I say two percent, I'm talking about the operational expenses. You know, the other assumption is the target goal is a six month operating reserve. And then all of this would begin in July of twenty-three, since we're about to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So here's the first strategy. This is making annual contributions at a flat amount and keeping that amount flat for the entire time period. And here I've laid out five, ten, fifteen and twenty years. And you can see that to hit that five or to hit six months of reserves within five years would require just under two million dollars. And then to hit it in twenty years without any growth in these contributions, that would require about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. And you can see that I have added the end amount because what you would pay in year one is what you would pay in year five, ten, fifteen or twenty. It's really my opinion that the first choice, five years, is not on the table because at the moment, that would exceed our surplus. But all of these other options we could consider. The next strategy would be two percent growth. So this would be growth that matches the general fund growth. So here, the amounts do go or start out lower than the last strategy. But again, I think the first option is not currently on the table. And then my concern with the ten year plan is that this end amount might become tricky to hit in the future. So I'm, at the moment, I don't think this is something we should consider, but I'm open to other considerations. So I think the fifteen and twenty year in this scenario have a lot of potential. And then finally, here is a, the third strategy, and this is a three point three percent growth rate. And the reason I came up with three point three percent is because that's the rate of increase that allows these contributions to stay even. So even if you adopt a two percent growth rate, every year, that contribution has less weight. Because at the same time, your general fund expenditures are growing as well. So if you just match two percent with the two percent growth of the general fund, every expenditure loses a small amount of value. But when you increase that to three point three percent, every contribution is equal and relative to the size of the general fund. So in this scenario, again, five years is very aggressive. And if you look at that end amount, it's even harder to hit. So, you know, my, again, I, my suggestion is to select either ten, fifteen or twenty years. Or maybe I removed ten. I'm sorry. No, that same, yeah, same theory as the last one. The one point three might get difficult to hit. So I'm sorry, so fifteen or twenty years. So when I put these all together or put, or I combine all the ones I think we should move forward with, if I look at the time and years and I look at the average based on those options, I think anything close to the average, which is sixteen point four years, is a good target. I think at the minimum, we should do sixteen. If we want to be more aggressive, we go do less than sixteen years. And then in terms of the amounts, I think something that reflects the average of both the beginning and end amounts for all these different options, for a total of nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand is also a good midpoint. So I think by, instead of picking one of these, by just going for that overall average, I think that builds in some flexibility. I think, you know, really to build up our reserves to that six month threshold that it requires both discipline and coming back every year and doing the same kind of analysis and saying, okay, what works best for us? And I think anything within this realm of possibilities, I mean, I think, you know, as of today, we might start with a higher beginning amount because we have that available as a surplus. And then maybe that works out for a few years and then maybe down the road, we might adjust to the, you know, doing a lower amount, but having that amount grow over time. You know, what makes this tricky is that what if the general fund grows faster than two percent, that then all of this goes out the window? What if expenditure growth is one percent and revenues grow at zero percent, you're going to have a similar issue. So all of this, because it's so far into the future, will really require both being dedicated to, you know, preserving a surplus and then also just year over year, saying that, you know, this is what our goal is and, you know, doing things that reflect those goals. So last but not least, we have the, or that concludes my list of strategies. And then at this point, I'm ready to adopt the budget. I would like to make one correction, which didn't make it on this slide deck. The city attorney's budget, I don't know if I can build this into the motion. Is that?
The change?
Yeah.
Just, we would amend the resolution, the adopt a resolution that amends the budget to reflect that dollar amount.
So I had an oversight. The city attorney's budget is more than she needs by about a hundred and ten thousand. That was my mistake. I'd like to transfer that into our non-departmental division within Fund six fifty and that's where the city attorney lives. So if we can make that change tonight, that would be helpful. And, you know, to her benefit, her budget showed a growth rate of like sixty-two percent. When I went over departments, that true figure is more like thirty-nine percent. So, sorry, Autumn.
Thank you for, thank you for acknowledging that. Do we need to do a separate motion for that one, for that piece right there?
It can just be made with the motion, just as part of the main motion.
So I guess first we'll say, do we have any questions for Director Millar? Councilmember Castellano?
I just have a, thank you for all of your work. That was very kind of fascinating analysis of the the reserves. And in relationship to that, you know, I mean, I appreciate making a decision this year, but is that also the kind of thing that we would potentially create a policy around that that then we could implement for future years? You know, because it looks like, you know, you're talking about, you know, a sixteen year plan. So is that something that would, you know, we would potentially give input to be brought back at a future meeting?
Yeah, so I actually plan on coming back, I think, late August or early September with an actual policy. But there was mention of a six month target. So I kind of wanted to lay out how we could achieve that, that threshold, so.
So if I understand your question, Councilmember Castellano, it's really about preserving this this goal beyond our years here. Is that, is, so when we set the policy, that will be carried on into future?
I don't know if you can set that in stone, but it's, I think it's worth the effort.
Can always be changed by future council.
That's what I was thinking. Just make it a little bit more difficult. They would have to, they would have to make a point to do it. Okay. Councilmember Arroyo.
On a related note, I understand that our finance advisory committee had, was interested in helping make recommendations around that policy. So do you still see a need for that? As you were giving your presentation, I was thinking, oh, well, if we're already kind of committing to this goal, you know, do you still see a need for a policy that guides that?
Yeah, and I would like to go back to the finance advisory committee and kind of lay out the same set of options and get their opinions, just to supplement whatever I hear from you guys as well as staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Do we have any comments from the audience, either in-house or on Zoom?
This is a public hearing, so if you can.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. It's a public hearing. Well, now open the public hearing. Does anybody have any any comments for this public hearing? Do we have any online?
Can you see me?
Latonya has one.
Yes.
Hey, Latonya, we can hear you.
I'm a vulnerable person. I don't do things the way they do around here and I need some help because I can't see everything I'm supposed to be seeing. Yeah. If someone's supposed to be hurting and I don't see it, I need someone to help me see it. Yeah. That doesn't mean that I don't know how to teach math. No. Doesn't mean that I don't know anything about. Yeah, I don't know much about the spirit realm. No, I don't. No. I mean, I'll just know about the Holy Spirit, which is a good one and the Holy Spirit don't hurt you.
So this is, this is a public hearing, so we need to stick to the topic at hand, which is budget.
Okay. We need to put prayer back in schools. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? No comments? I will close the public hearing then and I will bring it back to council. For a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
To, I make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution of the City of Eureka adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. And a resolution of the Eureka Public Financing Authority adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
As amended.
As amended, yeah, thank you.
I'll second that, too. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? All right, everybody vote.
Councilmember Bauer has two.
Councilmember Bergel has two.
There we go.
It could have been somebody from the, one of the kids today might have actually left. Yeah.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Moulton absent. Motion carries.
They're like, you can't vote twice. Nice work. Thank you, Director Millar. You can sleep well tonight. And then get back to work tomorrow. All right. So next up on our agenda is the consent calendar. Anybody need to pull anything? I didn't have any notice of that. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move, oh.
Go ahead.
Do it. I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Bergel, seconded by Councilmember Arroyo. Please vote.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Moulton absent. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the legislative action correspondence. Do we have anything that we need to send in? I do know there's a letter that was going out from the city. Talk about that.
So yeah, a letter came from Senator McGuire's office discussing support to send a letter in opposition to some of the financial reports that were submitted for the Surface Transportation Board. We initially received correspondence from his office requesting the letter go out and that was an email. And then earlier today, the office sent out one saying, hold on, hold on. And then just before this meeting, we received an updated version of that letter and I emailed it to the council. And so if there's any action that the council would like to take on that, then we can.
Action is, and do you want us, are we all comfortable with them sending it on our behalf?
I would say this seems very similar to what we were talking about at the last meeting that the council said to move forward with. No, this is slightly different. Autumn gave the tiniest shake of the head.
So.
So it is a little different. It's not, yeah, I understand how it's different in nature, but it's on the same topic, I should say.
It is. It's just it's kind of after the fact. Before it was to say to change their decision and now it's to say, don't accept the response from their decision, kind of.
Gotcha. I think it makes sense that we support that. It's for the same intended outcome.
Did everybody get a chance to see the letter and approve it? Okay. All right, so we've had three. We're all good.
They're all good, okay. I only saw two nodding heads, so I'll go for it.
Nope, we got four, four thumbs up. So thank you very much for working with Senator McGuire's office on that. Any other immediate legislative action items we need to send letters for? If not, we will move on to future agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they want to make sure is on a future? Does anybody have anything that they want to make sure is on a future agenda? All right, we gave them a list, like a real long list a couple of weeks ago, so I think that can keep us entertained for a very long time. Then we will move on to the city manager reports, where we will have a vacation rental update.
So thank you, Mayor and Council. Before Lane goes to sleep tonight, he's gonna present just a brief update about the vacation rentals. Just to refresh you guys' memory, uh, earlier this year, um, staff came to you with um kind of the status of our vacation dwelling units and um that we had hired a a consultant, and we're doing an inventory of them and trying to get everybody into compliance. So um Director Millar is here to provide an update about where we're at in that process, and after that, some point in the near future, once we get everybody registered and um and in compliance, we'll be back to council with discussions about how you guys would like to move forward after that. But Director Millar.
So this is going to be a very short update. Um, so essentially, uh, we're almost ready to go live with the website, and this tool is really important to uh this process uh because we want to make it uh very easy for the operators to both um initiate contact with the city, but also to um satisfy any uh owed taxes, and this is the route they will need to take. So essentially, you'll be able to go on to this website. This website is hosted by Granicus, uh, the same people that do our agendas. So you can come on here and you can register. Um, you're just registering for the purposes of paying your taxes. You're not actually getting any sort of permits. Uh, and then once you get in and you've identified your address and provided contact information, uh, this is where you can go report and pay your taxes. Um, so this is taking longer than we thought, but there's also a lot of um little details that we didn't really think about, and this kind of, this process forces you to consider uh what to do if somebody owes a lot but can't pay. So we're gonna have to figure out ways to set up payment plans. Um, and then also um just making sure that it's understood that this is the first step in what could be a very long process in terms of uh paying your T O T, getting your business license, but also getting permitted to, getting permitted uh both through Development Services and potentially the Building Department to ultimately be um legal to operate. So I believe that um we're only a couple of weeks away from selecting that first batch of operators. And then based on those operators, we need to send out a um uh some letters, and then uh that will kind of get the ball rolling, and we'll kind of do this process over and over again until we've contacted everybody out there. And again, this same uh software product also identifies the operators, gives us uh activity reports. It tells us who's permitted, who's not permitted. So um, and that's the product that we adopted, I think, two or three years ago at this point. So we have all this data, and now we built in a um a function that allows you to report and pay your taxes. Uh, this can also be used not only um by vacation rental operators, but also by hotels. So it does um provide better customer service for um all T O T payers. Um, so that's all I have for tonight.
I have two questions, actually.
I just want to expand. The reason the process is, Director Millar explained, is because of staffing levels. Um, we can't go out and inundate everybody and then expect to have um all the planning work done that's necessary and have all the inspections done. So we're making it so that we can do this piecemeal and still afford our staff to take care of their other responsibilities when we go through this process.
I have two easy questions, actually. Well, maybe. Uh, S T R at the beginning, what does that stand for? I'm sure I should know. Short-term rental, okay. I knew I would know it as soon as I saw it. And then um, the other thing is, when the website is almost ready to go live, is that going to be on our current website or on and then we're going to transition it to the new website as well?
Um, they are different platforms. It will uh
Okay.
homogenize as much as possible. You might see a link on our city's webpage that brings you here. Uh, in the future, we would like to do uh what's called um single login or
Yeah.
Sing.
Okay, so you'll just have a link to this is your own website that's separate from everything else?
Yeah, but it it'll be clear that it's also City of Eureka, so we'll, yeah.
I get it. Okay. Councilmember Bauer?
This, so I've talked to a few different people who have rentals and they're nervous about this process, you know, that um it's probably more a question for Director Girvin about, is there going to be an inspection, you know, of the place, or they have to be ADA compliant? All those things, which I assume is probably, yeah, you do. But I think as part of this process goes along, there needs maybe be some idea for people of what to expect. You know, if you want to continue this and have a vacation rental, here's the process you have to go through. So I'm just, for people's understanding, what to expect.
So I, I think I've spoke to most of council about this. I think the word's out there now. I think I've signed about ten um V D U applications um over that timeframe. The initial steps of reaching out to planning and and getting that permit process, they'll be well informed as to what potentially could come after that. So I think that um just initiating the conversation through the permit process will be able to allow staff to give them the information about what they need in order to be in compliance.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Arroyo.
So I know in our prep for this meeting, I should have asked in more detail. Um, so my understanding of this is that we are seeking to tackle the transient occupancy tax remedal and getting people like registered, but not managing the number, how, whether they, the host lives on the premises or not, any of those other questions through this process right now?
No, those other questions will come through regulations later, and once we get everybody um into compliance.
Okay.
As far as regulating V D U's. And V D U's are vacation dwelling units.
I knew that. That's why I was, I was trying to figure out. I was like, there's a V and a D, and I don't understand what S T R is.
Okay, so this is getting people who are currently operating outside the bounds of the system that's in place to remit tax, to get, to get their tax done.
And to be in compliance with our existing ordinance.
Gotcha. Um, and when people receive those letters, will they get um will they get information about how to do the business license and all that as well? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Cause I do, I I did um, I talked to Neighbor through it and realized that I don't have all of the information readily available in my mind. So I realized like, oh, I need, I need to, I knew that they needed a business license, but I didn't know what else they needed. Um, so could you, could you share what people will need?
There are different scenarios, but um I guess worst case and uh is that you would, well, the form luckily for the V D U's includes everything that we need to collect for business licenses. So we made small efficiencies that way, where you fill out one form and not two. Uh, but at the, you know, you're gonna at least have to get a business license, and then uh depending on where you're located in the zoning, uh, could really dictate um what you can do there and um how easy it is. So uh, you know, you might have to do a public hearing, you might have to, you know, get an inspection to review ADA, I believe. Oh, um, yeah, she would be the right person to ask. So, but from Finance Department, you need the business license, and you need to remit your T O T forms every quarter, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano.
Could it be possible to put like a checklist on this also, just so that people kind of know what that, oh, this is part of the process, but, you know, just so people have a visual representation of, because I could imagine myself going to this and be like, I'm done. You know, or so, so that people kind of can see like, okay, this, you've checked these two boxes by filling out this process, and you're gonna have to check these three boxes. And maybe even with that, like, how long it might take, or, you know, or things like that, so that way people have a sense of what to expect from the process.
So I think the Principal Planner Getz could explain this more, but there may be multiple checklists, because as we're talking about, there's different regulations in Upland, there's different regulations in the coastal zone, there's different regulations in different zoning districts. That checklist could be really cumbersome if it was just one single checklist. So it would have to be, okay, do you live in this and what's your zoning, and here's a checklist. Do you live in this?
Well, the checklist could just be, call the Planning Department and see what regulations you need to follow. I mean, that's a, a simple thing that people might not even think to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's really the first message is, like, simply contact us, you know, by telephone, email, or go on here and just put in your information. And once we know your parcel, your address, then we can provide those checklists.
Yeah, and, and calling Planning versus Building versus, you know, people just don't know who to call, so those things.
Principal, Principal Planner Getz knows everything, so.
Well, everybody should just call Principal Planner Getz, because she has time to just answer this all day long.
My apologies, Principal Planner Getz.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bauer?
I, I appreciate this is finally happening. This is great. But I think my big question would be, given our, our housing needs, when do we cut it off? You know, when do we say, if you're not in in six months, we're gonna have a set, we're gonna create a limit to the number, I think we should, create a limit to the number of vacation dwellings we have. When do we, you know, how, how long are we gonna do this before we do that?
I don't want to get the city attorney Luna too too squirmy. Um, like I said, those regulations will come. I think that we'll know when we go through this letter process as to who's really in and who's really not in, and what kind of, you know, remedies that we have if they continue. Um, we already have remedies in place if they continue and they don't come into compliance, and so those are already set. But I think we need to get to this process before we can talk about the regulations and what those look like and, and what council desires.
All right, are we all good now? All right, we'll close out our meeting. It's a big night for some folks. They have things to get to, so we will start with Councilmember Bergel.
Well, let's see. I just have a couple of things. Um, I did a lot of things. I have a couple of meetings coming up that I usually would go to before this meeting, but one's tomorrow with the Humboldt Bay Fire, and then I have a keep meeting coming up. Um, but I just want to give you a couple of things. The zoo, um, they're changing their hours for summer, so they're gonna be open ten to six. Um, and they're making great progress on the Plank House, so if you haven't been over there, that's at the Bear and Coyote exhibit. So if you haven't been over there, head on over and take a look. Um, I'm currently working on a project with D H H S that I'm really excited about, but I'm not gonna give you not gonna talk about it too much right now. Um, and then one thing that I just wanted to say is um, I got to attend uh the James, James Washington Track dedication, and I don't know if any of you know James Washington. He's a runner here locally, and he's been a coach for a thousand years. Well, not that long, but he's been a coach for a really long time. He's an exceptional human being, and he's been fundraising for like thirty years to get this track on, onboard. And so now Arcade High has a track, thanks to him and the support of the community, and it was just really awesome to go out and listen to people talk about who he is and what kind of person he is and his dedication to our youth. Um, they even had a guy come all the way from back east that was a former student, um, that said he would match. There's a few more dollars left to be raised, and um, this guy's gonna match any dollar that is raised uh to support the balance of what the track is gonna cost. And so then we all ran around the track, you know, in our high heels. It was super fun. And um so I just, I just really wanted to give a shout out to James because he is just, he's what, when you see the word community, he's certainly one of those people that really shines and uh, and is very appreciated by many, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer.
Just pretty much the standard set of meetings. You know, I, I will say that R C E A um meetings have been really interesting because we have rules about how much renewables we have to bring online and storage and the global economy and, and what's going on with supply chains. It's kind of making things difficult, and which is unfortunate. We're all anxious to get wind power and get solar power, and yet you can't get solar panels, especially when you need five hundred acres of solar panels or whatever. Um, so it's really interesting and kind of disappointing to watch this, like our community is so strongly, is so, uh, trying so hard to reach certain goals, and it's, it's, it's been, uh, it's a challenge, and we're falling behind. And um, yeah, I think, uh, you know, it's been a hard um couple of weeks, you know? Um, I can't believe you know, what happens in Texas and um that's really it's really affected me just because, you know, I don't know what to say other than we gotta do something, so um, I'll just leave it at that. I, I, it's been a hard, hard, hard for all of us, and I think, you know, we need to have a conversation about it at some point. Thanks.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, on that note, um, I hope this is okay to share, but I, I reached out to the city manager and E P D about doing another gun buyback, and um it sounds like that's in progress. So that's one small thing we can do, and I really encourage us to do everything we can locally to reduce the risk of gun violence, and maybe that looks like um some other steps. So I feel really motivated to talk more about that, you know, and um, and how do we really utilize the red flag laws that we have in place? You know, we're a community where people don't get in each other's business, and I think that works to our detriment um when it comes to um people who could be dangerous. And uh, and I think there needs to be some cultural change around um identifying um those concerns earlier. Um, and the much bigger question around um access to guns. Um, so not to say that that's not a big part of it. I was recently interviewed about that. And it caught me off guard, and I think I, my words were like too gentle. It was like, well, gosh, we need to, you know, um move forward with reasonable regulations or something like that. It was just kind of wishy-washy, um, because I wasn't, um, I was a little unprepared to talk about what actions we can take on a local level. Um, and I, I'd like to have that conversation more. Um, and I was also frankly frightened of people who um might retaliate about any message related to gun safety and gun control. Um, which is a big part of what we're dealing with as a country and as a community. So um, you know, I'll just leave that there. Um, other business, um, so Humboldt Transit Authority, uh, at our last meeting, we um it was pretty, pretty normal, some very administrative items, but I will say that ridership is, is ticking back up. Um, and so you know, I know there's a community member um who spoke earlier about, about um transit and desires to expand the hours, and with the ridership improving, um, that is, that is helpful to see. Um, we are just barely meeting the minimum fare box requirements for a lot of the routes, so to be able to sustain the service minimum ridership, but during COVID, some of that was suspended. Um, and so we're, we're getting back to having enough riders to sustain the routes that we, we would like to have, and um looking to add more service as soon as we can hire and train more drivers. So like every agency, we've had um difficulty with recruitment uh in some parts of the agency, and that has been improving a little bit. So looking to um meet that community request soon. And um, there was something else on my radar, but oh, I just wanted to um recognize that Kinetik Weekend was really cool. Um, the Kinetik what a joy it was to participate in that and to see people out um at Arts Alive. The farmers markets are starting back up in Eureka. The Henderson Market started this last week. That's on Thursdays um from ten to one, so um get out there and support local farmers. That was really well attended, so I think people are really enjoying the outdoor events and outdoor event spaces, and um I, I And, um, I, I vibrancy return to our community. I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Castellano.
Firstly, I just want to speak to, there are some things said during public comment that were, uh, grossly inaccurate in terms of, um, and, and, you know, usually I don't comment on other people's public comment, but when, when people say things about that, um, black people should thank white people on Juneteenth, I just want to say that that's not appropriate. And that, um, slavery is akin to wearing masks. I just want to say that's also not appropriate. And I feel like it's important to say that in, in this context, um, because, you know, we don't respond to public comment, but it also, it, it stands there and some things I think warrant a response or at least warrant, uh, people saying something about it. And I was really angry hearing that and not being able to respond and, um, yeah, it, it's really hard sometimes to hear things like that, um, that I think insult the, the beauty and progress and joy of, um, celebrations like Juneteenth. And just thanks to the folks who are continuing to, uh, move that forward. Um, let's see. And the things I've been up to, uh, I met with Senator McGuire, uh, with local, uh, county arts and culture leaders. So just thankful for that meeting. Um, I hosted a town hall, um, at Jefferson Community Center and thanks to the folks at Jefferson and the folks that came. And thanks to, uh, city manager Slattery. Um, it was a really just great discussion. People had their questions answered and I just appreciated being able to talk to people in that context. Um, and, uh, let's see. I, uh, hosted, uh, or co-hosted a self-advocacy meeting here. Um, and thanks to Assistant City Manager, uh, Powell for just helping out and helping set it up and everything. Um, there's, I'm, I'm co-organizing a site-specific art festival this weekend called Outer Ruminations. Um, it's out in Lolita. Uh, look it up if you like site-specific art. And, um, gosh, there's another thing happening that was on my list. Do, do, do. Oh, yes. Um, sorry. Uh, Calder Johnson, uh, and I, from NCRT, and I are, are working on a, a dream parade for Old Town Eureka to happen in August 13th. I've mentioned it before, but we're hosting a meeting on, um, June 7th. If any local businesses or anyone have questions and want to find out about the parade and its roots and things and prior, so that we, we can just totally be upfront, engage with people's questions about that. Uh, we're also gonna be kind of flyer-ing the local businesses along the route to let them know. And, uh, in, and I really appreciated, uh, council members, um, comments. I just want to let y'all know that there's a great high school group that's organizing a March for Our Lives event this Saturday in Arcata, um, at 3:30. Um, so it's just, yeah, inspiring to see, you know, teenagers coming out, um, to, to kind of take action about these things. So, um, that's, that is an opportunity to go out and, uh, be in public about this, you know, about, um, gun violence and to support, uh, these teenagers who are, you know, so courageous and really, uh, moving forward with action. So thanks to them for that.
All right. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting and we'll see you all in a couple of weeks.